Good evening. I would like to call our meeting to order and welcome everyone that is with us this evening in council chambers as well as those that are joining us via Zoom. It's always me. Is that better? Again, I'd like to welcome everyone that is with us this evening in council chambers as well as those that are joining us via Zoom. Moving right along, is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda this evening as presented?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. At this time, we will have Councilman Devin lead our invocation for us this evening.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day where we thank you for an opportunity to get together again this evening to discuss this town's business and just ask God that you give us wisdom and discernment and give us guidance and clarity to make the decisions that will bring this town on and bring you on. And we just thank you and give you all praise and honor. Jesus. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Jim, for returning the flag. We don't have our eBay flag picture up this evening. Appreciate that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have one special presentation this evening. We will have our Hatch Committee review of the Discover the Burg event. We'd like to welcome Jim Spina to give that this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure to introduce two of our Hatch Committee members, our Chairman Karen Andrade and our Vice Chairman Micah Cash. And they're here, they are part of our Hatch Committee. Both have been here since my arrival, two and a half years ago or so. They are very strong committee members, very committed and dedicated to the arts and our heritage. And they put together a special 50th anniversary event called Discover the Burg, and I'm going to have them come up and they'll take the microphone here.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Karen Andrade, and I'm the Chair of the Hatch Committee, and I'm here with Micah Cash, the Vice Chair of the Committee. And tonight, we are going to present to you some of the results, if you will, of the Discover the Burg event. So the Discover the Burg was an activity, was a fun scavenger hunt as part of the 50th anniversary where participants went around town to nine different locations to include the Hickory Ridge High School, Harrisburg Library, here, Town Hall, the Schoolhouse Commons. This took place on July 22 from 9:00 to 11:00. And it was, there was a fee of $20 per team. We had 13 teams sign up. Each team had probably like five members, and they went around town where Hatch Committee members were in these different locations and some other volunteers. And they received some of the swag from the 50th anniversary. And then at the end of the scavenger hunt, they receive a commemorative teacher.
Yes, thank you. One of the wonderful things about the event was so many individuals talked to us as volunteers throughout. And even though we might go to all the parks fairly often and some of these places around town, many people do not. And so there are actually people visiting parks for the first time and locations around town. One of the other things that they would offer in terms of feedback was, one, a request to do it next year. They had so much fun, even though it was a short hour-long event. And two, how we can do it better. And so some of that is new locations. We had a list of many locations for this year, and we narrowed it down to nine, and we kept them. Government Hatch ran, I mean, Harrisburg ran individual places, no businesses, nothing that didn't seem outside the ordinary. And so I think there's abilities for us to have new locations with volunteer committees that can maybe work with us in those places, as well as some trivia, historical facts about some of these places. And we started to do that this year, and we ran into some obstacles like citations. Are some of the things that we know about these actually true, or are they urban Harrisburg myths? And so had a little bit more time and resources, we can actually sort that out and educate people about some of the places here in town. And also signage for these locations. We enjoyed and leaned into the scavenger hunt feel of it. So there was just one volunteer wearing a 50th shirt, and they had to find us. But as you would imagine, when you have a car full of kids, maybe you want a sign that says you are actually in the right place. Please, everyone, get out of the car and come get some swag. So the request for 2024 was overwhelming that even though we planned this as something for the 50th anniversary, people really enjoyed this event. And they wanted us to do it again next year. And so we would love to have that as an opportunity and would request a line item in Jim's budget next year for a small event. And we also want to say a huge thank you to everybody here for putting us in the 50th budget and letting us do this event, as well as to Jim and his staff who found some swag and helped promote the event on the website. And other than that, Hatch took it and ran with it. I am happy to answer any questions either to me or Karen.
Thank you both for that presentation. We've received quite a bit of feedback of the positive nature of that event as well. Sounds like everybody had a great time.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to public comment. Anyone wishing to address town council may do so during this time. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments about the subject and not personal in nature. We will go to those in council chambers first and then move to anyone via Zoom. We did not have anyone sign up on the public comment sheet that was outside of the door, but if there is anyone in council chambers that would like to speak during public comment, just please raise your hand and we'll call you to the podium. There is no one in council chambers. Is there anyone online joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comments? You can raise your hand and we can call on you. And there is no one that has requested on Zoom, so we will close our public comments. Next, we will move to consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening? Motion, there's a second on the?
Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion has passed. Communications and first up is our town manager with this report.
See how much data I can grab him. All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Evening, everybody. I have a quick update on several items this evening, but first and foremost, I wanted to actually circle back to consent agenda and point out two items on there tonight that I know have been on the council, but this is kind of the final piece of legislation that we do on our grants. And we had a few of these last month, so I did want to recap and just go over them. I know we have had presentations. So I didn't think it was worth a full presentation and slideshow. But you'll notice two items on the agenda were, one, a grant for the American Rescue Plan. Both of them were for American Rescue Plan funds. One was for water asset, $240,000 grant obtained by our staff and a sewer inventory CIP as well, which is $160,000 that our staff was able to obtain. And if you recall, you know, this is kind of an initiative that we were challenged on by the council and just as a group amongst ourselves to go out and try to, you know, find some of these rescue plan funds as well as surface transportation, MPO funds. And I know several, several people that sit on the dais here pushed pretty hard for several years, even as my time as Public Works Director and Town Engineer to make this, you know, a big part of what we do. And I didn't want to gloss over, you know, how well our staff is doing at this. It's a, it's a lot of work. Certainly takes a lot of expertise, and the impacts are pretty significant. So if you just look at this evening, obviously, $400,000 is a lot of money on these two things that we would either not do at all or we would spend local tax dollars on. In addition to that, last month, we had three of these on as well, which was the Hickory Ridge pedestrian project that was 1.7 million. And that's just the grant amount. Obviously, we have additional funds in that as well. The 49 improvements, which were nearly 7.4 million in grant funds, and the Caldwell Road extension, which is 4.9 million. All of these were written and all of the data analysis, the pre-engineering, everything involved, if it was done by our staff, Mallory Hodgson and her staff down in the Public Works and Engineering Departments were able to put this stuff together. And if you look at these projects, that's, that's $14.3 million just in the past year that our staff's been able to bring in in additional revenue to the town. Total investment on that, including our, our local match, is 17.8 million. That's a big deal. And it's hard to kind of, you know, we throw around a lot of big numbers when we go through our budget process. And what we, you know, we get these grants and they kind of come in and we spend them, and, and we don't circle back. But if we were to put that into a one-year impact to the town, that 17.8 million is, is 59.3 cents in the tax rate. Nearly a year and a half, 1.4 years of taxes. If we dedicated every bit of property tax that we collected from the residents, we'd have to spend an entire year and a half of taxes just to do what we brought in on these grants and the investment that we're making. So I wanted to point out that our staff's doing a really good job on this in a really short period of time. This isn't something that we did before, and it isn't something that happened overnight. It took a long time to build the staff and the resources that we have in those departments in order to do that. So we're excited to do these projects, but I didn't want to act like they were routine either. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff and point out, I think they're doing a heck of a job.
I had a question with regards to that. I mean, that's an amazing job. One, I don't know that I've ever heard numbers like that come through. I would love to look at our history and see where we, you know, what kind of grants we've gotten in the past versus where we are. I think the biggest thing is to steal Ian's term is having chauffeured projects. So my question now is the million-dollar question. Do we still have enough projects sitting on the shelf that if more grants become available, we can apply or are we kind of tapped this one?
I think we're a victim of our own success in that regard. So we've gotten funds for everything that we've kind of had. This year is a year where we're doing that analysis, and you guys have funded that through this year's budget to look at our CIP, to look at our long-range planning and say, you know, what, what are these projects? We know we have projects coming. But how do we get the preliminary engineering ready enough that we can act quickly? And so we're doing that on water resources. We're doing that on our long-range CIP for all of our infrastructure. These are all things that are being updated this year. So we do believe we're going to be in good position moving forward. But yeah, we kind of have all of the big ticket items that we've done preliminary engineering on. We've actually gone out and gotten funding. So we do need to replenish that cupboard, so to speak, and that's what this year's about.
Well, I'll remind what I said before. It's nice to be in the county MPO, and we've been pointed back as the role model. So Mallory, thank you for your work in that. And it's always nice to be in that club of follow what they're doing. They're getting it right. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate that. And I, you know, I think our staff is second to none, and I think that shows when we go into these regional groups, whether it be the Regional Stormwater Partnership, which, you know, we're a leader on, the MPO, which we're now a leader on. I think time and time again, you see that our, our staff really outperforms any expectation that we set for them. We appreciate those kind words. Next thing I had up was something I'm real excited about because I haven't had anybody in the position in about six weeks. And as you know, I'm an engineer, not a communication specialist. So we did, we did hire, and some of you have met, but I wanted to announce for the community that didn't know, our new communications director, Kathy Heim, Kathy. And I'll, I'll paraphrase a little bit of the press release that we have. Kathy comes to us just super qualified, and she is doing an amazing job. Those of you that haven't had the opportunity to meet her or stop in, say hi. She's a bundle of joy and certainly brings the spirits up around the office. But Kathy's responsible for all aspects of town outreach, including our citizens, community partners, business media. And Kathy also oversee all of our branding initiatives, social media, communications, website, marketing, community relations. We're putting a lot back onto her plate, and Kathy has more than 20 years of experience in the role. So I have a ton of confidence in her abilities, including time spent with local organizations like Charlotte Motor Speedway and Fort Line Waterworks, which is a public traded company. And Kathy and her family previously lived here in Harrisburg and do so again, and have been here for more than 10 years. Moved away briefly, and Kathy says she is very, very, very happy to be back. She loves Harrisburg, and there's a lot of exciting things going on here, and she can't wait to share that with everybody. Looking forward to building on our current communications efforts and increasing our outreach. Kathy is near and dear to my heart also because she's from Cleveland, Ohio. So go Browns, go Buckeyes. And she has two children, both in Cabarrus County Schools, and husband Noah and her have been married for more than 14 years. And I'll turn it over to Kathy, if you wouldn't mind, and I'll let her introduce our newest employee of the town who started today.
Very do. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for that warm welcome, Rob. And now you have set me up horribly because I don't have half that information. I'm Casey Howard, who has joined us this morning. She is eight hours into, nine-ish hours into the job. So she is our communications manager. She is coming to us from WBTV as a news producer, and we just learned that Rodney is also a former WBTV person. So a lot of storytelling background, video, just really going to help elevate the town's communications in the ways that people are consuming information now. So really excited to have her on board. Like Rob said, I'm excited to be here myself. We're looking forward to really getting the information out there, you know, and like I said, elevating the communication. So can't wait to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And Kathy also is going right out of the pan and into the fire and doing a presentation tonight. And she'll do a presentation later on Youth Council because Kathy has volunteered to run that organization in-house, which we're really excited about her having the capacity to do that. And as a reminder, the applications for this year's Youth Council are on the website. Those have been sent out and applications closed on the 18th. So go to the website and fill that out. If you know anybody interested, we are taking applications currently. I'll take any questions if you haven't.
Thank you, Rob. Next up, our finance report from Brian Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, our finance report after the first month of the fiscal year. So this is a look at a few different slides at once. The revenue and expense dashboard for operations. Tax collections are at 1%. This represents motor vehicle taxes collected in July. The bulk of real property tax comes between about November and January, so we don't expect to see much movement on this in the early part of the year. And that weighs a little bit on the general funds overall revenue collections. As you can see, it's at about 3% after one month. The water and sewer fund as well as the stormwater fund are right on target at 8% as we expect. Departmental expenditures over operations. All the general government departments are in really good shape here, ranging from three to 10%. In finance, we have some upfront costs for the year, software costs and other subscriptions. So that takes us a little bit higher than you would expect one month in, but no concerns across any of the general government departments here. And same sort of story across the rest of the general fund departments, the fire department at 9%, but no concern there. And as we're used to hearing for the last couple of years, Parks and Rec shows us red early on in the year, and that starts to taper off due to the July 4th and a lot of the deposits that we put down on concerts and other events throughout the year. So no real actual concerns there with Parks and Rec. Water and sewer and stormwater are at 4% and 5% budget utilization, respectively. Salaries across the town are at 7%. So no real concerns one month into the fiscal year. This is a look at our single-year projects for the year, for this year. So we've combined last year's single-year projects with this year's as well to show you the full picture here. And the first one we'll comment on is street resurfacing for Powellville. That is on the agenda for consideration tonight on the consent agenda. And that total is about 645,000. That's about 560 in Powellville funding and a contribution from a developer in Rocky River Crossing, and then the rest is local funds being added into that total. The second is the pond improvements at Harrisburg Park. I've described this one to you a few times over the past few months, but all we have left there is the walking track around the pond, and we're just trying to avoid the different concert series and especially the 50th event. But that should be wrapped up by December 31st. The next is Wellington Lane Stormwater Upgrade. That was an emergency pipe repair that we made a couple of months ago. And so this project represents the full replacement of that, the permanent replacement. So we'll be reporting on that over the next couple of months, and that contract is also on the agenda tonight. And lastly, are the spot improvements for stormwater at Oakley and Willow, and that's been moved to 100% complete. That was very close right at year end, and so we just had a couple of items to carry over to this year, but it was finished in July. Next up are our multi-year projects in design. And the first group here are the transportation bonds, Stallings Road sidewalks, greenways, traffic mitigation with Cambridge Drive and Roberto Road. So those are all in about the 90-95% design completion. And so we will be bidding and presenting those construction contracts to you over the next about 60 days. And the next group that I'll highlight is the federally funded 80-20 grants that Rob described. So I just also wanted to point out that this does represent over 17 million in transportation projects, and that will be completed over the next couple of years. This is a look at our multi-year projects that are under construction. So the first here are sidewalks on Stallings Road. That goes from Stallings Farm to Raging Ridge Road. And that construction contract was approved at the July meeting, should be completed over about the next three months. The next is the Cabarrus Woods waterline upgrades. That contract is also on the agenda tonight and should be completed by 12/31/24. And lastly, the 21-22 water lines are at about 95% complete. We only have some punch-out items left to complete on this project, and that will wrap that up. So this is a look at all of our equipment projects. The first one tonight is a backup and disaster recovery replacement in IT. And that is on the consent agenda tonight, as well as the replacement portable radios for the fire department. So both of those were on the consent agenda. We also have three projects here under the fire department that range from 5% to 10% complete. And those mean that they've gotten the quotes together, and they're, they're beginning the purchasing process, but they don't rise to the level that need to be presented to council. So those will kind of be off your radar a little bit, but we'll report on those as they receive that equipment. Vehicle projects, we have a little bit of movement. A motorcycle was ordered for the deputies, and that will come in this month. So it's nice to see a vehicle come in pretty quickly. And another one with the same sort of story is the street sweeper for the stormwater department. With approval tonight, that will also get ordered, and it's readily available. So we will be receiving that within about 30 days. Good to see movement on two vehicles. Professional services projects, the fiscal year 2023 financial audit is well underway. It is mostly prepared for. The financial statements are being written right now, and we have audit field work in September. And lastly, the Strategic Economic Development Plan is on the agenda tonight, so I won't steal too much of Zach's thunder, but that should be completed by about the end of January. And last year, about this time, I gave you kind of a little rundown on the number of customers that we have with water and sewer, stormwater billing. How many were receiving paper bills, and then how many were on auto draft? So I was really happy to see that, that we've added almost 300 customers, but the number that are getting paper bills has dropped by 233. So over a 500 customer swing when you consider the additions. So I was really happy to see that movement there, that more people are going to e-billing. It's, it's cheaper and more reliable to get those bills distributed. For auto draft, it looks like 22% is our percentage that we're going to see because we, we don't really budge off of that. We were at about 20% before implementing the free monthly drawing, got up to about 22%, and that's kind of where we're, we're settled in right now. But we're always thinking of ideas of how to motivate people to get on auto draft. And as always, the ARPA update, we have about 5.4 million in grant revenue as well as interest earned on those funds. And so remaining to appropriate over the next about 15 months is about 870,000. And I would welcome any questions.
Brian, on one of your slides, you had listed the ADA sidewalk project.
Yes.
When we look at that, I know there was initial plan of the whole project that we talked about, the yearly project, is 62% total project or is that just a year?
We have one that, that is actually marked as complete, and that was last year's. If you can see it right above the spot improvements there at the bottom, that one was just marked as complete, but we only spent 62% of the funds so far. And then up top, about the fourth item down, we have the new 24 ADA sidewalk program. And so that's a new 100,000 that will be spent. And I know Mallory's working on getting those put together now.
And I don't want to confuse it, but we did have a study. So is that listed as the ADA or is that?
Okay.
So part of that 62%, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the budget utilization is what we had been billed for as of July 31st. So some of those bills keep rolling in. We spent all of the ADA money for fiscal year '23, and we're starting to implement it for fiscal year '24. We did the study in fiscal year '21, and that was part of that. The study was prior to implementing the $100,000 annual budget. So that didn't hit this. We'll, we'll probably do another study in fiscal year '25 where we've got enough work that we don't need to do another one yet. So that's where we're at with that.
And we're still meeting as a DOT standard because we are attempting it, which was just the app. Overall, what would you say was the percentage we were at?
For the whole project, it's hard to say. We had, so we have 65-ish sidewalk miles, if I'm remembering correctly. We had done an analysis on about 20 of them, and then the public facing parts of this building, sorry, the employee facing parts of this building. And then, you know, some of our other facilities, we haven't done an assessment of yet. It's hard to put a percent complete on the overall ADA compliance of the town because it's ever-changing. But having the transition plan has definitely been beneficial to us. As, you know, complaints come in, we, we have a way to addressing it. And I, talking to other public works directors in the area, I think we're way ahead of what other municipalities are doing. So I think we're doing a good job there, but difficult to put a number on percent complete overall.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brian?
Yeah, Brian, I was thinking as far as auto draft, right? I wonder how the, the fees may be a deterrent for folks where they have to pay that service fee. And since it's going to be saving us employee time, right? And then it will be making it more reliable and more consistent that we're getting those funds. Can we consider maybe waiving the fees and see if we'll get more people to sign up?
The, the bank draft is actually free. So it's only, it's only credit cards that cost money. And a lot of people do confuse the automatic credit card draft with the bank draft. So we want to push everyone to the bank draft because it's free, it's reliable, it's easy. But if you go and set up your own credit card draft on the website, that still has a fee attached to it.
So maybe and communicate to people that it's free?
Yeah.
And all they have to do is come in to here, talk to customer service, and then present like their void check?
We have a form online now, and it does not require the voided checks. So yeah. Yeah, so I think that's probably the biggest barrier that's now been, been broken. So yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Everybody listening.
So yeah, hopefully we do see some movement on that.
And there's no fees for auto draft.
And maybe Kathy and Casey can help us out with the communication on that.
Great, great news. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Felt like we needed some confetti for being over there. You're very excited about that. Next up, we have our law enforcement report, and we have Captain Nicemar with us here this evening.
Mayor, Council. Our July numbers, our total law enforcement-related activities was 2,662. We conducted 1,875 residence checks on your neighborhoods, your homes. We conducted one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five residence checks on your neighborhoods, your homes, along with your businesses. We conducted five hundred and ninety-two traffic stops with a non-emergency response time of six minutes and twenty seconds. Very, very great underneath the seven minutes we set for ourselves. Newest employees, we have Deputy Ryan Dauber. He just got to Marine Corps after serving four years, spent three years as an MP. He's currently in training with us now. And in this corner, we have Deputy Chauncey Mercer. I love saying that name, Chauncey. We were blessed to get him. He spent three, or three semesters with us in his internship, so we know him well. And we were happy that he decided to come work for us and not try to go to any of the other agencies that were courting him. He's currently in his training now. Another thing I wanted to bring up is HOA rules. For some reason, this past few weeks, this has hit us very hard. We've gotten into some pretty nasty heated debates with some of the HOA presidents and boards. For some reason, they have gotten the idea that we can enforce HOA rules. HOA rules are not law in any way, shape, or form, and absolutely nothing we can enforce unless there is a law that would be violated and their rule actually mirrors it. So I just kind of wanted to bring that up in a public setting to remind folks that we cannot enforce your HOA rules, especially anything to do with your swimming pool. Another thing that was asked to be brought up by Councilman Dellinger is a civilian traffic investigator passage. This is a new bill that has come out that allows for civilian, trained civilians to be able to show up at accidents and take the paperwork. The DMV three forty-nine that's required by law to fill out, be filled out if the wreck is over a thousand dollars. I think this is a good idea for somebody, an agency, let's say that takes more than a hundred a day. I believe Winston and currently Winston-Salem, Winston and I cannot remember the other one off the top of my head. Only two agencies are actually to Wilmington that are actually doing it now. There's a lot of ifs and buts. There's no training for them. The community colleges are refusing to train any type of civilian that's not law enforcement or sworn personnel. So the governor's still going to have to work out how that training is going to take place for those folks. Also, the downside is an officer still has to go with them. So an officer still has to go move the wreck out of the road, handle traffic, make sure there's no violation or crimes being committed. Then they're able to leave in the last twenty, thirty minutes that would take to do the report. That's what the civilian would actually be doing. So I can see it having its place in a huge city with way, way more wrecks than us. But this time, I wouldn't think that would be a good fit for Harrisburg. Any questions about that one? I know there was a few things that came back.
Did they give them like, did they give the cities that are doing this kind of stuff? I mean, what's the risk? If 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 that person commits a crime or gets in a scuffle and we said that they could be out there doing it, presumably that puts risk on the sheriff's office.
I think it's more like a code enforcement type that once we show up and we've secured the scene and make sure that the people that were involved in the wreck are being cordial with each other, there's no laws been violated, we've got them out of the roadway. Let's say we moved them to a public's parking lot, then I think it would almost be like a code enforcement officer showing up and doing the report for us.
But if they got hit by a car.
Yes.
They could have said, why was I there running official business?
I think at this point, with what the two agencies I mentioned, they're mainly using the officers to secure everything down, bubble wrapping it for them. And then they show up in a Prius and pretty much just knock out the paperwork for them.
And they're not, no training.
If they've got any right now, it's coming from that agency, because I checked and the local colleges are not allowing them to take place in any of that training. And that's the tough part about DMV three forty-nine. It's two pages, and it doesn't change much. But it does take a little bit of effort, training, and continuing education to get them right. And the person that's there, if he didn't see the wreck, if he didn't, if he wasn't there as we're moving the cars, et cetera, they're going to have no clue what to put on that wreck report. So the officer's going to have to sit next to them and walk them through the report. I don't think it's a great fit for us, but maybe some of the larger agencies can work out the kinks, and then it'll filter down to some of the smaller.
Yeah, I think this is something we need to get ahead of and understand, and so it looks like it's moving forward if you read the bills and stuff. But one of the questions would also be is, what do these guys do in the meantime between we have five wrecks a day? Or two wrecks a day, what are they doing in the meantime, and what salary are we having to pay them as?
I don't really, I don't really think this affects cities even under two hundred and fifty thousand. It's just not a you know, these civilian investigators can't do the police part. So the police are still going to have to be there. So for the smaller communities, like you said, that the scale isn't there, we'd still have to send police out. And we'd have to have these investigator units, and depending how big a city you are, you don't have enough volume, and then the volume gets too great, and then who does it? You know, you really have to have a division. So I would think if when, you know, this this is implemented in cities, you're going to see, you know, the Charlottes, the Rowleys, the Greensburrows that have a platoon of civilian traffic investigators that'll probably end up being, you know, located within their police departments and eventually realize like, hey, maybe I'll go get a commission and move over. So I don't know, you know, how effective it'll be, but it won't be for us.
The one downside I have is anybody's been a cop for more than ten days. You show up at a wreck, everything's great, but then dad shows up, mom shows up. The drunk uncle shows up, something happens, and that nice secured wreck scene falls apart on you, and it happens. And once we've left, then we'd have to come back again with that civilian. Then that was with what Councilman Patrick said, where are we at with the liability of that of them being in a danger situation? I appreciate the governor thinking out of the box, but I'm not sure that's a good fit for, I know that's not a good fit for us.
Well, I'm glad we're addressing it early on, and we can put it aside and move forward.
And last but not least, the incident that occurred at Stallings Park. I was asked to talk about that and give an update. The call came in as a large fistfight. And when officers got out there, they found that a Nigerian baseball team and a Dominican baseball team decided to have a ballgame through Facebook. They did not have any umpires and a bases. They didn't have uniforms, so they were somewhat organized. When they got out there, something took place and hands started being thrown. We know for a fact a fight occurred. We saw the end results. When the officers got there, they were told that a person had been stabbed. The victim was never located. He never showed up at a hospital. We did find the weapon that allegedly was used for the stabbing. It was a box cutter. And as you know, you don't get stabbed with a box cutter. You get sliced. Generally, a stomach wound bleeds profusely. We could not find any blood anywhere in that park, including where the one person that said the stabbing took place stated that it occurred. We should have seen quite a bit of blood and a blood trail even heading out to the parking lot. There was no blood on the case cutter. The suspect is denying that he used it. He did say that he pulled it out, but never used it. So at this point, we have a suspect with no victim, and I'm not convinced that it even occurred. He may have sliced and missed, but I don't think it was the situation we were originally led to believe of a true stabbing. So that's where we stand at this point. Nobody has gone to any hospital in the surrounding area since then with that type of injury.
Do we know where these folks came from? I mean, were they community, were they outside the community?
Outside community, Facebook group, they claim to have tried to call the parks a few times, but I'm not sure that took place. And we were having, along with the language barrier, they have a very large distrust of police. So anybody that attempted to have contact with us were scorned immediately and ushered away by other team members. So it was a very difficult scene for the deputies to try to investigate, because nobody wanted to cooperate. And if they did, they were going to be browbeat until they did. The group did leave peacefully. They cleaned up after themselves, and hopefully they won't be back. We were unable, we tried to find the Facebook post, couldn't find them. And the one that we did see that was on a person's phone was not in a language any of us could even come close to recognizing. So that's best I can give you on that scenario. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have our fire department report with Chief Dunn, and I've probably, I think it was your turn to go first. I'll get it right next time. Try to flip, flip lot those.
It is sometimes hard to follow you. Good evening, Mayor Council. I appreciate us moving over here so my bald spot doesn't show. Anyway. Next. Look at that. All righty, Harrisburg Fire Department, July recap. Some of our community outreach, Station Two attended a bike ride rally at Bradford Park Community. They also went to the Steeplechase Community on July fourth and attended and spoke with them there, showed the kids the trucks and all of that good stuff. So Bradford Park looks like they had about twenty-five kids, and Steeplechase was a little bit larger, had a hundred and fifty people. Station One provided a tour for a preschool group, about fifteen kids in the middle. As we added last month, the fire marshal activities, some of the completed annual inspections, thirty-nine. Plan reviews was four. You can go through this list. Special event planning, things of that nature had to do with Fourth of July. Our pre-planned scheduled and then pre-planned completed. For those that don't, are not aware what they are, our staff goes out to the commercial structures and updates the information for those structures so that they, when they get there, they know where critical utilities are or other hazards that are within the bill. So we also broke it down into a graph chart as well. So you can see sixty-nine percent were general inspections. Gets in a little bit more detail on the next slide. So you can see the July inspections, he did total fifty-two for that division. First inspections was thirty-four, and then they had a total eighteen re-inspections. So what qualifies as a re-inspection if they found some particular issue with that business, they give them time to correct that issue, and then they go back out and look at. So for this year, they've done four hundred and forty-nine inspections. I think right now we're up to about seven hundred actual businesses within the town of Harrisburg. As far as our fire department stats, incidents for this month were two hundred and forty-eight. Incidents for the year so far, sixteen hundred and thirty-four. And our average response time is four minutes and eighteen seconds. I think that ticked up a little bit from last month. Our incidents by station, you see Station One took the majority of the incidents. It's a little misleading because a lot of training did take place at Station One this particular month. So if an incident did come in, they were responding from that location. Again, a number of units that, this is a new slide that we've added, the number of units responding by incident. So seventy-two percent of the time, we send one engine or one ladder to an incident. You can see two, two goes about thirteen percent of the time. All stations go about eleven percent of the time, and then you have another other category. This outlines, as we do every month, the particular percentage of each apparatus that is manned. And you can see again, this month, I think, actually, engine, I might have to get wooing to make that font bigger. Station Three was pretty busy this month along with the ladder. Again, about forty-nine, this is about the trend, forty-nine or fifty percent to sixty percent of our incidents involve EMS of some type, whether it's a rescue, in-house medical, or some type of accident. Again, this is about the trend, seventy-seven percent of the time, we handle incidents on our own. And you can see thirteen and eight percent respective of the aid given or received. July fifth was our busiest day for this particular month, which was interesting since it was right after July four. Again, the number of incidents by zone has been pointed out several months. Our forty-nine corridor continues to be the hotspot. Our incidents are ticking up in our residential areas. People produce calls, so as more neighborhoods go in, we seem to be going in those neighborhoods more. Again, operational updates, crews provided Fourth of July coverage for the parks. We completed, this is some of the training that took place at Station One. They completed our initial company operations or preparation for initial company operations. And they also completed the initial company operations training, which was completed in August as well. Or will be completing August, excuse me. And hydro testing and pre-plans, as we discussed earlier, are being completed as scheduled. And that's it. Good stuff.
So I think if I read correctly, thankfully, we did not have any fire incidents in July.
So, no, I don't think we had any, I think there was a vehicle fire. I'll have to go back and look. Is that something that you want to see? Is there something actually had flames attached to it?
No, I just think that's.
We can do that. I'm sure we can break that out. Not a problem.
The Fourth of July, I know there was a lot of heat going on today, but did we ever get a number? Roughly how many folks that we did service at there?
Not that I'm aware, but we can. We'll have to do it. We only give one incident number for the event itself. But we do track through patient information. We have to do, keep track of that. I know particularly on July fourth, between about four o'clock and about six-thirty, there were several incidents where were dehydration, and we had to start IVs for those folks. I know there's four or five of those, I do know, but I'll get that number for you if you're interested.
Was the, was there any activity on the third at all?
I don't think there was as much. You know, nighttime event, people aren't kind of, aren't out all day as they're on the fourth, the family event before they get there. So I think that was the difference.
Thank you, Chief Dunn. Just a couple mayor's comments this evening. I did want to thank our staff for a wonderful Rockin' the Burg series concert that we had this past Saturday. The band was fantastic, beach theme to go along with the beach weather that we had, because it was quite warm. We are looking forward to our next Rockin' the Burg event, which is September ninth, and that is featuring the Garthga. And that will be celebrating our early two thousands as part of our decade celebration for our fiftieth year. Our fifth annual Harrisburg Multicultural Festival will also be the following weekend on September sixteenth, from ten AM to two PM as well. I did also want to thank our staff for planning the upcoming Advisory Board Recognition Dinner that is happening next week. There's been so much discussion over many months to kind of figure out a way to properly acknowledge the service and recognition of the many advisory board members as we have streamlined those committees. And I think this is a more personal way to really show our appreciation for their service as opposed to coming up and getting a piece of paper or a plaque, but to just really have some fellowship and a dinner where we can all be there to enjoy that. So looking forward to that next week. On August first, I was able to attend the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department National Night Out. That's such a great event, if you guys have never done that before. It was great to see our sheriff's department and all of our first responders really kind of build that relationship with the community. They did car seat checks, crime scene, fingerprinting for the kids, kind of everything in between. It was just kind of a fun, fun evening. So thanks to everyone that participated, attended, and for those that sponsored that event. Lastly, on Wednesday, I attended our Board of Delegates meeting at the Central Lina Regional Council Office. This is actually their fifty-fifth year, and we were able to kind of review some of their work plan items for twenty twenty-four. And it's really stacked with a lot of local government programming and services. In fact, Rob and I are meeting with Geraldine, who is the show over there, to kind of go through some of those things for us. So anything from code enforcement to grant writing, transportation demand management, to the aging population demand and challenges. They really are a valuable resource for our region, so lots more in the planning stages. And I'll be sure to keep you updated after our next meeting next month. And with that, we'll go to council comments.
So I have a couple of questions. I don't know about y'all, but like for the last six weeks, I've had about four or five solicitations about bug service. All right, today's guy, luckily, I said, and I've asked him to, let me see their permits. So the guy did pull up his permit, all right, which was great. I was like, wow, I was impressed, right? The previous ones was like, yeah, I hear you, so what? And one said, all the. And one said, oh, the Supreme Court, don't get me out of it, are, are, you know. It, it's getting a little annoying, but the guy today said that his boss had been approached by a sheriff person and asked, do you have a permit? And they said no, and they were instructed to do that. So I guess one of the things would be, is that something that, I mean, how can we handle that going forward? Because I know my neighbors are getting tired of these pest people knocking on their doors.
So you asking who you should call?
I know, we're supposed to just call the sheriff's department, right?
Well, I think you can, you know, I, I think you, you explained the first part of the process, right? If you tell the solicitor, like first and foremost, say, hey, go, go talk to Zach. If, if they, if they don't, we can send code enforcement out. And then I think, third and final, we can send.
I know the call, right?
Yeah.
Exactly, right. I got it. You want to say anything on that, Captain?
We have gone about the meeting, there's currently three permits, I think handing, group of company, a solar company, and I believe bug. Call us, deputies have been told, no more warnings, right? If however, be great, they don't write on the town citation board, then we'll go from there and continue to do a right state citation.
I, I wonder if this kind of crosses some of the line of the A.A. rules, because I know there are several neighborhoods that have no solicitation rules for their neighborhoods, so is that?
This was written to help enforce that. And that's why we, I think it was what, two years ago, three years ago?
It's been several.
Yeah, it was. Because at the guidance of the sheriff's department, they had no way to get them out, even though the sign was there, there was no ordinance in the town.
Okay.
Right, so.
But even if they have a permit and your neighborhood says no solicitation.
If they have no soliciting and they show up with a permit, then the homeowners association can, or the homeowner, go take out a private trespassing warrant if they wish to. There's no state interest to it, we'll generally just pass the information on if they feel strongly enough, they can take out the private one.
And we record this, right Zach, Rob, on the website, this is which companies have it, right?
It is on the website.
Yeah.
And recently I just spoke with Kathy about adding it to the law enforcement section to make it a little easier to find.
Oh, good.
As he was saying, when they do get permit, he tells them this doesn't dissolve you of any HOA rules or laws, et cetera. So they're made aware of that. So all my deputies have been told, just write the ticket and let's be done. Send them on their way. And if they have to write all, most of the time it's eight guys being dropped off in a white van, write all eight of them, be done.
Okay, so that brings probably, I'm glad you're back up, sorry, I forgot to ask you. Are we doing a lot of patrolling of the neighborhoods lately?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All those residence checks, that's part of the neighborhoods.
Okay.
But we will not stop a solicitor on average, because we don't know who they are.
Yeah.
So we see a person walking down the road with a clipboard, we may stop them and ask, are you soliciting? But that could also be just a homeowner or somebody going around with HOA doing house inspections and make sure everybody's in the rules. So we generally go complaint based off of those.
But two of the guys were on those willy things where they balance themselves and speed down the street on them, right? So that might be a.
We met.
Marson use at job sites.
I'm sorry?
Marson use at job sites, is that written?
About the same, it's not a giant uptick.
What if we need pest control? I've just been waiting around for somebody to show up and nobody showed up yet.
Is that a town permit or a state permit?
Town.
Town.
Town ordinance, yeah.
So the way we do it on state citations, you guys made it a misdemeanor, but we were, we will start off with a town citation. If they don't get the point, then we'll take them to court over it then, based on your ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so Zach.
Sorry, Rob.
The berm at Camellia Gardens, have you been able to find any documentation as how high that's supposed to be?
We did check, there is no berm on the approved plan. So what you have, and I'll be glad to share it with you, is a very, what I would call very robust planting with quite a bit of both evergreen, seasonal bushes, it's pretty significant. And I think when that grows up, it'll be, it'll be a nice green, but there is no, there was no required berm per se. And just to address that real quick, so under the old ordinance, the choice was either a berm or a wide separation, in this case, I think it was 50 feet. And they chose the, the ladder, but they have done, and, and I can, glad to share that with you, but it's a pretty stout landscaping plan.
Because I know a lot of people are looking at that, that were involved in.
Yeah, it's pretty open right now.
Yeah, right, and it's like you just see right back into everything. Okay, thank you.
Has there been any change on Camellia Gardens? Really reason to ask, because I was asked this week, signs were down, new homes coming, price points, whatever it is, but there's no Camellia Gardens sign.
No, no, no change, I think, you know, now that the process has started, I, I think that the need for visual advertising is probably not as important, but no, there's been no change, we're still issuing permits.
So if I, if Mallory could just, for the residents that are involved that live close to Harmony, the upkeep of the weeds and stuff.
So maybe tag team this a little bit, because I think Tom went out there too, or code enforcement, but we are aware of some lack of maintenance of the frontage on Harmony. They, we've pushed them to get out there to mow, and I, they missed a spot, I guess, but they're going to come back and touch that up. They can't do anything else until they've fulfilled some of their obligations on the current plat area. And then finalizing the next plat area, they could take them up to 70 lots, and then they'll have to put in the signal improvements at Rocky River Installings.
So people can hear building going on, on the next 30 lots, but after that.
Right, so there are some things that they have to do before they can do the next 30, and then after that, they'll put the signal in and then they can continue, continue plating.
Yeah, I know neighbors in the, in my neighborhood are concerned about the grass and, and all that, so thank you for looking into that, I know that'll be.
Stay there.
Not yet.
I didn't want you to get too far. What is the tie to the light at Ingraham Ridge installed?
That's Camilla Gardens' next phase of plating, so before they can plot further, they'll have to put that light in as well.
So how many homes?
I don't remember that number off the top of my head, I can get it to you tomorrow, though.
Because that's, that's the other one that's starting to surface, is people are becoming aware, there's going to be a.
Yes.
Cycle there and what, what triggers it, when we should expect.
Yeah, we'll submit that number tomorrow and I can, and you know, have Rob announce it in the manager's comments next month, so it's public.
Since we're discussing Camellia, only because I know it happened. What's the Eastwood Development Parish or Village?
Village, yes.
They have one of those wonderful paths, really gardens. Do we have a plan to put like a post in the center to keep vehicles off of, because they're already taking vehicles down this one.
We definitely can do that, that's a very easy fix. So the, the path out front is public access, obviously, so we would not want vehicles driving down that part of the sidewalk.
I mean, I know Harrisburg Village does have a pole somewhere in the middle, because the neighbor that reported to me said, well, they just got to the pole and realized they can't go any further, so it was like, I don't know, a super.
Yeah, so for Harrisburg Village, we can either, before we take over maintenance of that, have them put, you know, a pole in the middle so we can't get vehicles on it, or go ahead and just do it ourselves. Once we take that over, so we'll, we'll get something in there so people can't drive on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
So before you go, sorry.
No, you're fine.
So somebody did report, and I know school started this week, and they said there at, at the school at Camellia Gardens, people were just staying in the roundabout. So this is going to be a concern when they start coming out of Camellia Gardens and trying to get out anything, any comments there and going around, and they, people were just like dead stock.
We saw this the first few weeks of school last year, and it was the first time that those roundabouts were in service. And it seemed like it tapered off after a few weeks, people got used to it, so I'm, I'm hopeful that that will happen again.
I think it was especially bad this last week because nobody was utilizing that second lane. Apparently, that is, that is like apparent, no, no, that if you drive up there and then you have to merge into the folks that have been there since noon waiting for their child to get picked up, it's not very great. So they've been circling around or coming down to Stallings Farm and turning around and then parking. So it was definitely worse than last year, but I, I think it was better today than it was last week. And I would expect that to.
And I had a few conversations last year with the SRO, the School Resource Officers, and with Captain Meesmer, so we can, Lieutenant Meesmer, so we can have more conversations with them if we need to, make sure that they're moving the traffic through.
It would definitely help, because even, even when it tapered off, they're still not using that, that second lane that they were required.
Elementary school, I think a day or two into this, I forget, maybe it was Friday that they sent out this notification. They recommended if you're in the roundabout and it's, you know, backed up, basically, to keep going straight to the other roundabout and come around and line up. I don't know if people are going to start doing that or what.
No, they're turning around in our neighborhood, they're not going.
Run over the solicitors. We, we had the same, we, we had the same issue last year. Takes about a week and a half, you know, seven school days before people figured it out. We, we did have to kind of beat the, the school folks into submission on this, and I imagine we'll have to do this every year.
Yes.
I've been dropping kids off at elementary school for 15 years now, and every year, it's terrible for a week until they figure out, you know. The people that have been there for the first time figure out the, the way, and the new teachers figure out the way, and the new resource officers figure out the way. But, you know, we extended that for two lanes for a reason, and the school doesn't love to utilize them sometimes, and we have to get Captain Meesmer and the SRO and our folks involved to say, hey, stage up in both lanes and, and rotate in, that's the whole purpose of it, they're, they're queuing lanes. We, if we build a third lane, you don't want to leave two lanes wide open, right? So we're giving all the parents and all the traffic the ability to queue on the site. If you show up two hours to pick your kid up, you're not going to get there any faster, you just show up when school lets out and, you know, queue up in both lanes and rotate through, so.
Well, even, even at the end of the year, there really was no reason for them to be lined up and pulled over on the side of Stallings Road, because there was plenty of room in there, nobody is using that second lane. And, and I've heard it's because there's all those folks that are waiting in the first lane, and no one wants to let them merge in. Because they're showing up at the appropriate time to pick their child up and not two hours before. And so they're there to go in, and it's just, there's no merging happening.
So can we somehow talk to the school system? It's like, everybody's coming in right there at the beginning, if you kind of directed them on back to like be headed out, they need to make an improvement, but they go into the back and then start to head out, then it would build all that traffic up in there. Because even when they're lining up on Stallings.
Yeah.
But they're using the left-hand lane and there's, somebody's got, there's going to be a heading, there's going to be a heading crash there eventually, because those backing up on Stallings are using the left-hand lane on Stallings to get around all that traffic to get through the roundabout.
Is, is it worthwhile, or do we have to ask you to put some back of the garbage, use both lanes, trigger on the road or signs there? Because as you're saying, if it's forbidden not to use that lane and zig in, which is what it's designed for, if we had signage there that says stack both lanes, I don't know if that helps us or not.
I mean, we, we could, I guess the school would have to make that determination. Now, this is one of those weird situations where it's private public property, right? It's still public property, but it's not our public property. So really, the school needs to communicate with the parents, like, hey, use both lanes, we'd be happy to pay for the signs and put it on that property. But I think the problem is the school doesn't necessarily invest in, in that same thing, and we got to kind of push them each year. But within about a week and a half, they, they end up utilizing it, but I, I think that's just going to be a beginning of year thing for the first week and a half. We're always going to have to reach out, we're always going to have to talk to the SRO until they get everybody lined up like lemmings, kind of following what they did the day before.
I mean, there's a simple solution. We can buy a large vehicle, paint it yellow. I mean.
Everybody has to take their picture the first day.
Put your kids on the bus, it's good for them.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear more about this radical idea of the larger vehicle.
Well, and sadly, I, I think it's going to take somebody physically being out there, and then you're talking about manpower to have somebody direct that, and that will probably go great for a week, and then they'll go right back.
We had asked, we had asked the school about putting an SRO back out there, and they had cut that from their budget with the roundabout, so that wasn't an option last year. And it, it stuck on me up a little this year, so I'll try to get it on the agenda earlier on my agenda, so we have those conversations with the SROs.
Here again, when you have 300 cars trying to get out in the morning from that 150 home neighborhood.
Yeah, it's going to get worse, obviously, with the.
From 6:47 to 7:07, it's no luck, and it backs up all the way. But it's a moment in time. So I look at it as, I plan my morning, if I'm up and it's that time, I'm going to sit wait at the house.
And maybe some of them will use the really wide sidewalks to walk to school. And leave some of the traffic.
Last question, right from a CBS, and I didn't notice today, but there's two of the yellow things that allow you to turn into CVS now off of 49, anybody noticed that?
The lane dividers. Yeah, we can get with the OT to fix those.
All right, I didn't know if we're allowing that now, or that we're just.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Since, since we're still on roads, even though it's not us, it does affect us. Frank, well, you've got Stone Road Bridge, that's going to start to close August 21st for 12 weeks. It, it was told to us in the NPO that George Wiles was supposed to be expanded by 2029, they got bumped to 2035, and they said probably closer to 36, maybe 37. So as a compromise, they've decided to go in and expand that bridge since it's the most. It'll be down for 12 weeks, so if you're needing to get Frank Lewis, we need to go from 49 to, as opposed to a bird. Signs, 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 here's your sign question. Can we reach out proactively to sports? And get some, no overnight parking signs for council.
Believe we've done that, I'll circle back and see, I mean, we've, this isn't a new issue with the POA. Parking is prohibited there, where, where we do this overnight parking and stuff, but it's not prohibited by us. It's prohibited through the POA, the, you know, homeowners association, town center. So it really then becomes a code enforcement, so there are periods in time where, you know, we, this kicks its head up again, and, and we do it, I will reach out and see if there's something that.
They're starting to drift towards Cheryl Williams now.
Yeah.
Block traffic views, that's all I have.
Any other council comments this evening?
Great, moving right along, we do not have any. We do not have any public hearings. So we will move to old business, and up first is Zach for the Harrisburg Retirement Residents.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. For the Harrisburg Retirement Residents, the applicant has asked staff to convey a request to defer action on this rezoning until council's September 11th meeting to give them the opportunity to address some of the issues that were raised at the. Until Council's September eleventh meeting to give them the opportunity to address some of the issues that were raised at the public hearing. Specifically, traffic uh concerns on Rocky River Road. If um the council uh was inclined to do so, a motion to defer would be required. And um that would take care of it.
Thank you, Zach. With that, is there a motion on the floor to defer until the September meeting? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you, Zach. And next up is the consideration of adoption of the new bylaws for the Harrisburg Youth Council. And our communications director Kathy will be presenting for us this evening. And Lee.
Yes, I know I'm not Kathy. I apologize. Uh, wanted to just give a brief intro. She's gonna say the lion's share of this presentation, but I just have one slide to just kinda give a little context of where we are. Since uh we all have had that uh history. So uh back in January of this year. We brought to council concerns about time commitment uh of our staff at the time. Again, our, uh, at that time, communications director was running the youth council. Um, as uh council may remember, it was initially a few years ago created uh by a council person, the former council person. And uh it was largely handled voluntarily and that eventually came in under staff. So um we had some definite concerns about the time commitment. As we got into, later into the year, into the spring. We began looking at all the other advisory boards. And so the youth council came in as one of those other ones that council directed us to evaluate. Uh, some of the concerns that council had mentioned to us at the time, if you remember, um, there were too many members. We had, I think, over forty members at the time. Uh, it, there wasn't a restriction to Harrisburg itself. There was not enough communication between the youth council to the town council. And then there was also a desire uh for, from council that the youth council would actually have some type of capstone project each year. That they would uh do uh for the community and be able to come to council and present that at the end of the year. So um in summer of twenty twenty-three, as we rounded here the last couple of months. Uh, we did again, luckily hire Kathy um as our communications director. And now that she has some help as well, uh, that department essentially doubled in size. So now there's a capacity. And Kathy was willing to do it. So we went ahead and have communications continuing to run this. So we kinda jumped in and, and picked up everything. So uh what I'll do with just after that history, I'll turn everything over to Kathy and let her talk you through it.
And so Lee is given the background. And so now I've just got a quick look at where are we now. So um we revamped the bylaws. Um, you just got a new, um, just a, a updated version of that in front of you. That we kinda tweaked a little bit today based on some social media um feedback, just for some clarity. And so we'll get to that at the end. So that is out there. The application has been posted online. It's an online application due by this Friday. Um, so we've got that live and have already received six um applicants. So that's wonderful. Um, and then the first meeting in the group then would be um September twenty-sixth. So then the students would meet from September through May. Uh, fourth Tuesday of each month. So what will they do? Again, to Lee's point, it would be doing a lot of the returning activities um that they were used to, some guest speakers, um volunteer opportunities. A lot of different things that they have done in the past, but then the big uptick is the addition of a capstone project. So will the first meeting we have with the students um really get them thinking about something they'd be interested in doing that would impact the town. So it, it gives them that experience of a, a, a complete start to end project. So that is, we think, a great addition. Um, and keeps it a little more um focused. So then what are the goals with these changes? And so like I said, it's more focused. They're gonna walk away with a completed project. See how they can make an impact on their community and again, do some other things um like volunteer and grow themselves um as individuals. Um, it's more structured. It's not just a, a hangout at night kind of a thing. So we're gonna um really have them focused on specific uh activities. And so ultimately the kids will get more out of it. So it's, like I said, they'll walk away with a completed project, uh, learn a lot, um, grow. As individuals and, and then the town obviously benefits too because they'll, that work will be completed um and implemented. So then the motion um is in um to adopt the Harrisburg Youth Council bylaws as presented. And like I said, it, you have in front of you, we had this written out and then there was a little um social media concern about, you know. Needing some clarity around who is eligible. So um we wanna adopt the bylaws with the updated language of applicants should be in the ninth through twelfth grade. During each applicable school year, be enrolled in a Cabarrus County Public, Private, or Homeschool. And reside within the town of Harrisburg's planning area. So there's no ambiguity on what that means. Um, first consideration, however, will be given to students residing within town limits of the town of Harrisburg. So that change, um, we wanna adopt bylaws with that change.
So the twenty applicants, if one of them gets put on probation or one of them drops out, will you um fill that position? Or will it remain um at twenty throughout the year or can it drop down to eighteen?
Um, I think the, well, it, it depends. If we do have um some applicants kind of in the bank, uh, obviously we would consider the replacement. For sure.
And you'll be recording and giving, I mean, you're gonna be recording strictly their attendance and reporting to the, the uh school counselor, right? Um, if they do not meet the qualifications of, if they get, if they have, if they have to be put on probation or they do not attend the meetings.
Yeah, I think that we had in the past a, a point system, but we benchmarked some of the other youth councils in the area like Cabarrus County. Uh, Concord, Kannapolis. Um, I think we, one of the updates you'll notice too is that we um eliminated the point system. So more is, yeah, it just makes it a little bit easier. But yeah, there is an attendance, obviously, and um expectation that we have of, of anyone that participates.
And lastly, if somebody from the outside wants to, um, an adult wants to be able to um, to assist and help you. What is the process of that person applying?
Sure, they can. Um, and actually, um, for a brief period, this was um, this initiative had gone over to Parks and Rec. And, and Jim has already identified a few of those volunteer types for us. So thank God, cause I'm so new. Um, I appreciate all the help I can get. So yeah, absolutely. I'd, um, anyone can contact me or, um, yeah, actually just contact me. It's probably easiest.
Do we make sure that we require um background check and hold up on the adult volunteers?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we, we have that internal process already. I know I've spoken to some about it, but as far as just qualification vetting. That'll be done through uh Kathy and hers as far as um volunteer vetting. That goes through our HR department and we do background and all of that things. And that, that goes with all our volunteers, wouldn't just be for youth council. But our youth council volunteers would fall under that same umbrella to make sure they're being uh vetted the same as a youth athletics person.
What about meeting minutes? Will you be um drafting meeting minutes and posting them?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll attend every meeting, meeting minutes, all of this stuff.
Um, and as far as updating uh council kind of throughout the year, what kind of, how frequently or what kind of updates should we expect?
Yeah, there's a requirement, um, two updates from the students. So one, just kind of uh giving you the information of what their capstone project is. Um, and then, you know, they can um get some your feedback and tweak a, as they go. And then um obviously the final presentation for them would be, here's our capstone project. Here's what we're recommending.
In section seven, I notice that you've got, member must attend one meeting of planning and zoning, uh, town council. How is that track? Is that something they're gonna reach back to you and say, I was there? I mean, it's on a basis, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'm probably at most have done anyway. So yeah, they could track it directly through me, but we'll, we'll put something more formal in place for that, for sure.
Probably easy sign off.
Yeah.
Advisory board members could probably sign off on something.
Yeah.
So. Will they get the experience? I mean, when all this started coming up many years ago, the idea was this was gonna be a way to introduce. Our high school kids to local government. You know, whether it be through their capstone project or coming back to do a presentation to council or understanding. You know, all the different poles that we go through. Um, is, is that also encapsulated in all this?
I think that's separate. That's part of the um returning activities. So what I've been able to kinda see what's been done in the past is um like a presentation from Parks and Rec. A presentation or a, a town council member attending and just like you said, talking through what, you know, a, a day in the life kind of a thing. So we'll definitely keep that piece of it. So they do get a broad look at um, at local government and how it works.
Will you also, well, citizens again, we reside with you as well, or is that gonna go back?
We haven't gotten there.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. That'll um stay with communications, but Kathy isn't, isn't on it yet. So um, yeah, no, that'll be, that'll be something that. It'll, I mean, it's always been a, a team effort, but communications is kinda taking the lead on it. Um, but don't scare Kathy away before she's been here too long.
I've got a long to do.
And I think the mayor position is the liaison. Yeah, I think that's kind of important. I mean, this is a really great opportunity for these kids that really want to learn a little bit more about it. So I think we can come up with some pretty fun and engaging components to that.
Awesome.
So in the previous bylaws, there was something about a state charter and within three years. We're not concerned about that right now. We're really con, right? We're really concerned about that the youth get the understanding of how government works and do a project. Is this true? Yeah, like, like anything else that we do. I mean, um, standards and recognitions are important, right? We, we wanna get those certifications, but let's, let's walk before we run, right? So I mean, this is something new to us. Um, we haven't ness, you know, this is step one of kinda narrowing it down, benchmarking it. Making sure that internally we do it right before holding ourselves to other people's standards. Let's get our own standards uh right. And then a year or two down the road, um, that could be a good project for youth council to do is like look and see what, what it would take to be chartered, right?
So speaking of standards, um, who determines and how are social media and behavioral standards determined?
I think.
What's appropriate and what's not appropriate?
I think. Don't know if we have that outlined specifically here, but I think we have it outlined elsewhere in, on the town website, just as a general um guideline. So we happy to incorporate that into whatever we need to, so that the students are clear on what's appropriate and what's not.
Some of it's like a, is it like a code of conduct essentially that they're signing?
And just to clarify that question, is that as youth council members or is this like a pre-screening question?
As he's, well, actually both. And I mean, you know, uh, you know, it's no secret that we're in a vastly changing world. Languages changing, views are changing. Um, you know, what's appropriate, uh, you know, even those definitions are changing. So who determines and how is that determined?
Yeah, I think individually is, is uh mayor and Kathy said it's a, it goes back to a code of conduct thing. When it comes to, you know, what youth council, because youth council has access to some social medias that are um particularly youth council related. Um, we will monitor that live. So you know, that has much less chance of going sideways. Than let's say an individual student's maybe private account that we don't have access to, that nobody knows about until they do. And, and then it kinda goes back to a code of conduct scenario at that point and, and you deal with it case by case.
I think any school clubs or school sports, they have to sign a code of conduct with a kinda list out expectations. So I would imagine this would be very similar to that.
And speaking of which, I mean, and that needs to be put in here that they will, they have to read this and sign it, right? I don't think it necessarily said that in there, but just like we have to sign a code of conduct. They would have to sign that they have read and understood the rules that are being put before them in the bylaws.
It would be a separate document.
It would be a se-
It would be a separate list.
There are no rules for that kind of behavior.
Well, no, but it says about missing, how many meetings they can miss, what happens to them if they do miss that, being put on probation and all that. I mean, that needs to be understood too. And, and it needs to be understood that is kinda different than previous. Because previous, it was just a party, to be honest, right? And they need to, and I, I think they need to understand that now. Yeah, I, I think that uh, that goes without saying. And also, um, you know, I, I wanna point out that, you know, bylaws serve one purpose. Policies serve another. The vast majority of what we do and especially in these organizations like this are done via policy. So who the liaison is, is, is a policy. And I know we've suggested that um the mayor be the, the liaison initially. And then, you know, code of conduct is a policy and we can update that quicker, right? Bylaws are, are a founding document that kinda y'all vote on. But um if we find something troublesome, we can adopt policies of the youth council that, you know, Kathy can implement immediately. But so, but, but we do need to put in here that it says that they will be required to sign a policy document or a code of conduct.
No, that wouldn't be in your bylaws.
Would it not?
No, that, they would have to, the bylaws would be reviewed with them. And then there would be a separate sheet that probably highlights the big things like the attendance, but they run the bylaws, it's been explained and they understand.
Yeah, you just, yeah, I mean, that's more of a, a, a membership requirement. You know, here's your, okay, here's your code of conduct. Also like, you know, just act accordingly. Like if it's not in the code of conduct, that's fine. But also you're a youth council. There, there's, there's a, a higher level of expectation than um not being in a youth council. And, and I'll be honest with you, this has not been a problem. I mean, our youth council members that sign up, these are not low achievers. So um they're typically not social media problems, behavior problems, attendance problems. The, these kids are pretty impressive. So we don't anticipate any issues related with that. But as you know, when you're starting anything new, there's always issues that you gotta work out the kinks. And we, we anticipate some kinks, but not, not large behavioral problems.
Thanks, Lee and Kathy for putting all that together and getting that really in motion for the start of the school year, especially with the shortened summer. Had a few last weeks to kinda work on that. So I really appreciate you guys bringing that to us this evening. Um, if there are no more questions, is there a motion to adopt the attached bylaws of the Harrisburg Youth Council as presented this evening? Some motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All tea, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion has carried. Next up, under new business, we will have Zach joining us again for several items. The first up is the considering the appointments of the planning and zoning board.
Yes, good, good evening again, everyone. It's been a little while since I saw you, but uh we're ready to roll. Okay, so um back in May, you all approved revised, speaking of um rules of procedure. For planning and zoning board, which changed the terms uh to two years from three years. Limited to two consecutive terms, uh, also added a sustainability position to the planning zoning board, all of which were two-year terms. Presently, we have three members who are rotating off, who have termed out. And uh there's also still a vacant ETJ uh seat to be filled. Uh, so four vacancies on the board. And so there's also the sustainability position that we uh would, would like to see uh filled. Uh, in June, there were um advertisements for uh P, uh planning zoning board as well as board of adjustment, which we'll get to in just a minute. And we received eight responses. Uh, we, a committee of council members, Patrick Dellinger and myself. Conducted interviews with these applicants on July twenty-first and twenty-eighth. And based on those interviews, uh, the committee is recommending town council appointment of the following individuals. I will review each. Um, there are three regular members and one sustainability member. ETJ member we'll talk about separately, still to be filled. Uh, Bill Leek uh is uh recommended for a regular member. Bill is a professional arborist for the city of Concord. And will bring a wealth of experience uh related to obviously land you, uh landscaping, plan review, uh tree preservation. And promoting the uh aesthetic uh view, look of the town and environmental benefits. Uh, that these um planting. view, look of the town and environmental benefits that these planting provide. Faith Silva, a regular member. Faith has most recently served as chair of the Harrisburg Sustainability Advisory Board, where she's worked to promote sustainability, incorporating that into towns practices. And she's committed to applying those practices to the land development process. So we're excited about that. Input Jessica Fava is third regular member. Jessica's a professional Realtor who is well-versed in the regulatory requirements that guide land development in the process in Harrisburg and supportive of smart growth for the town while maintaining the town's unique character. And then finally, Kez Hubler, who is also a member of the Harrisburg Sustainability Advisory Board, is currently working with and has been working with Faith on improvements to the sustainability section of the U D O. Kez is passionate about the application of sustainability practices to land development process and would be an advocate for the promotion of high-quality growth, preserving the town's open space and green space. And in her professional world, she is also a leader in sustainability practices for, I believe, ATRIM. And matter of fact, they won an award for the work that they did. And so the request for this evening is the appointment of Bill Leek, Faith Silva, Jessica Fava and Kez Hubler to the Planning and Zoning Board for two-year terms and motion to appoint would be appropriate. Any questions I can answer or obviously Councilman Patrick or Dellinger can as well?
Well, thank you both for going through the interview process and for all of the applicants and for those four that are on the list. We're very excited for their willingness to serve. So with that, is there a motion on the floor to approve the appointments as presented this evening? Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried and welcome. Bill, Faith, Jessica and Kez. Next up is the consideration of appointments to the Board of Adjustments.
So moving into the Board of Adjustment, as you know, as part of the revision of rules of procedure for the Planning and Zoning Board, there was a decision to separate the Board of Adjustment from the Planning and Zoning Board, making it's making a distinct board with separate members. The B O A will have five members, which would include one ETJ member and two alternates, each appointed for three-year terms. That's a statutory requirement. Maximum two consecutive terms. Planning, zoning board and town council members are eligible to serve on the B O A. As with the Planning and Zoning Board, we advertise for B O A members and applicants indicated their preference for either Planning and Zoning, Board of Adjustment. And again, the eight responses, we looked at all of the members or all the applicants for the positions. Again, myself and council members, Patrick and Dellinger conducted interviews July 21st and 28th. And based on the interviews, we have a group of individuals to recommend for, and that should be three-year terms, my apologies. And so you can see the list of members, Ian Patrick, Michael Branham, Brandon Ross, Monica Long, Kevin Schaffner and Kevin Hutchins. Kevin Schaffner and Kevin Hutchins are Planning and Zoning Board members. They would serve as alternates. Monica Long is a Planning and Zoning Board member and she would serve as a regular member. Brandon Ross and Michael Branham are new members. And then of course, Councilman Patrick would be a new member. There's still yet a ETJ position that we are working to fill for both Planning and Zoning and B O A. And the, the expectation is that they would cover both. I'm sorry, I went in the wrong direction. Just to point out, we have two new members who are, you know, new to the, the volunteer board realm. Michael Branham's retired from AT&T where he was, he served as project manager, including a small project for the Panther Stadium. And so I'm sure that was interesting. Brandon Ross is assistant operator with Duke and previously served as president, vice president of Bridgepoint HOA Board. And so the motion again would be for the appointments for three-year terms. You can see that the, the terms for Monica and Kevin would, would be only till 25 because their appointment as part of, as Planning and Zoning Board members, they were also Board of Adjustment members. And so those appointments were made last year. But Kevin, Kevin Hutchins' appointment was initially 21 and so it would be up in 24. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer, but that is the slate of B O A members.
So just so it's understanding that we, that one of the Kevins will be the fifth person until we find an ETJ person.
Correct. Rich?
Am I allowed to vote on this?
Okay.
That's a great question.
Trying to keep it level.
Are there any other questions for Zach? If not, is there a motion on the floor to appoint the following residents to the Board of Adjustment as presented this evening? Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried.
Thank you. And tomorrow evening, we will put both immediately into service. We're going to train them and bring a text amendment before them just to get them worked up.
And again, thanks to those that are serving on that. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. And I'd just like to say thank you to all the applicants. Thank you to Lee, Rob and Zach in being able to revamp this and get it into a all cumbersome for all the boards. Thank you so much. I think that will be a benefit to the town.
And we're going to shift gears now.
We're going to shift gears appropriately. We're going to shift gears to food trucks. Nice. That was, that was very well done. So planning staff has been asked to assess the town's current food truck regulations and to recommend changes to the U D O as appropriate. So we have reviewed our regulations. We have found some areas where there could be some tightening up, where we could have some more specifics. And so we are recommending some amendments to address those deficiencies in the regulating of food trucks and food truck courts as a temporary use along with the process to permit those uses. Proposed amendment, proposed amendments would be intended to allow for the legitimate operation of food trucks while protecting obviously the public health, safety and welfare, along with enhancing quality of life for the town residents and those who work and visit the town. So real quick overview. Currently, food trucks are allowed in accordance with several sections of the U D O. It's considered a temporary use. And so you need to get a temporary use permit, which is issued by the planning department. Is allowed within non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts. And so that is the, the general rule. The current regulations allow for one day at a time per event with a maximum total of 365 events per year. And so if you can absorb that quickly, we will move on. But that is what it says. Yes, it is. Again, temporary use permit is required. Accessory use and structure standards regulate the use of food trucks as well. There are certain land use categories to which this use may be considered accessory, including educational and medical facilities. So conceivably outside of our emergency room, you could have a food truck to help feed the people working there. That would apply to parks, office, retail sales, service, repair. That's just some of there. There's a few others, but that, that gives you a pretty good cross-section. Criteria that is required right now for use would be permission from the property owner. So you can't just set up on Mike's lawn and start selling from his property. You have to get permission, but that is part of the application process. We've got to see that. Placement of food trucks has got to be outside any setbacks, site triangles, buffers, so that there's no conflict. Section does not include a definition for food truck court, but normally the, the general rule is that that would be the permanent arrangement for three or more food trucks. Like a food truck rally kind of thing. If you've been to those, they're a little bit more than just one. And so, and I apologize to the audience for this being a little bit, I don't know if you've seen it on the back screen, but food truck regulations really vary pretty widely from, you know, community to community. Duration, how long you can have a permit, Kannapolis is 90 days. Huntersville allows for 365 days. You can see Davidson also 365 days. That seems to be the, the, the norm. There's limitations on the time, which we don't currently have. There's also the requirement for the removal of the truck overnight. So you don't park it there and leave it there. And that is something that we would also be recommending. Charlotte, obviously a little bit different, few more trucks. And those are allowed both as accessory uses and in non-residential zones as principal uses, which again, you have a different environment in, in Charlotte. So really, there's a lot of different elements, but you know, primarily it's location, hours of operation and the duration of the permit. Those are the, the big, the big ones. So our recommendation is to establish clear definitions for food trucks and food truck courts. We do not have that currently. Consider maximum number of days per year and or maximum consecutive days. We think that the current one-day, 365 permanence is probably not really very workable. Additional criteria I already mentioned prohibit overnight parking, limit hours of operation and also prohibiting food truck operations on vacant property. So it has to be a property that has a use on it. You can't just set up on a vacant property and start selling whatever it is. There would be exemptions for the places of worship, private clubs, HOAs or similar uses. There are currently exemptions for events on public property already. Schools, parks, obviously, you know, events, Rockin' the Burg, et cetera. Those are sponsored by the public. And so those would be exempt. We have included in your packet Kannapolis Food Truck Regulations, which we think is a good framework. And one of the key features of that is that they have combined the accessory and the temporary use. So they just deal with it as a temporary use permit. Accessory starts to make it a little bit difficult. We have two different sections. So we proposed combining those and having all of the restrictions and requirements within the same location. And so with that, I will answer any questions. And if they're really hard, I will call Shelley, the heart to the platform and she will answer those.
What's the thought on while you're rewriting this? Cause I didn't see any changes on where you're going to allow them? All uses or are you sure yet?
So currently it is all non-residential and mixed-use. So essentially that would be all the commercial zones. In Kannapolis, there's not a blanket across every commercial zone. So we certainly could look at distinguishing where they would be allowed. The, the new U D O did reduce the number of non-residential and residential zones. So we have fewer, but we certainly would look at that. And the, what we're really looking for tonight is, is some feedback. If there's anything specific that you would like us to look at closely, such as that, we'd be glad to do so. And then we would bring, staff would draft something up and bring it to the Planning and Zoning Board for their September 19th meeting and then bring something back to you in October for your consideration. So I mean, that, that we certainly can look at that.
I only ask because I see that like HOAs are exempt, right? If they want to have a block party at their pool, they can have a food truck.
Right.
But if I wanted to have a block party in my neighborhood, we wouldn't be exempt because we don't have an HOA. And so I'm not suggesting, but want to do it in residential areas. I'm just saying there's some weird unintended consequences if we start just opening it up to, you know.
I mean, I, I saw food trucks at folks' graduation parties, like in there that did not have HOAs. So I don't know.
Yeah, we, yeah, we spoke through that a, a little bit. And I think our, our intent would be as a staff to sit down and, and get us to like the 99 percentile here and then get it to P and Z and then get it to y'all. But I've kind of envisioned this and we'll have to look back at the nuance of non-HOA. But my understanding was if, if this was on private residential property for a short period of time, it was kind of permitted. But if you needed to close a road, we have a different process for like a block party, right? So if you were going to block traffic, you could kind of go through an encroachment process to get this done in your case, but, but we'd, we'd look at that specifically. But when we kind of, you know, thought exercise this out, it's always been, how do we provide, you know, adequate availability for food trucks where we already have pedestrian traffic? Right? We don't want food trucks necessarily pulling the ice cream truck route up and down 49. But town center, yes, potentially you might have something, you know, over in Low Shopping Center or in Publix or Farmington or, you know, the, these are the areas that from a doing it on the public streets and in the public makes sense. And then there's kind of other, you know, this other category of doing it as a block party or at your church or at some institution, something like that. So we have some good framework, but I.
I don't, I don't, I mean, my neighborhood wouldn't, we'd, we'd all, we'd grill our own meat.
When we look at where we were, we know we have one consistent business that uses food trucks. And I certainly don't want to put something in place that's going to alienate those guys and make. I mean, they've been doing it right from the very beginning. I know they had some issues with their location with tenants next door, but they will, they all worked that out. I think this surface because we had a food truck pop up in 49 and just anchored down in a parking lot next to a barber shop. And here we go. We got a taco stand and it's going to be there for several days. And I think they had greater plans to be there longer than that. I mean, I would honestly like to have some input from those folks. So they understand that we're not making this against them, that, that business, whether we, we have, we have some interaction with H B N. Because we certainly don't want to isolate our business partners in the community. We need some input from those guys. You know, when we're thinking about availability, how long, personally, I'm going to tell you it would be like three days max. Not because if you're thinking in a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, if you have a festival, festival or whatever in the park or these guys, bring them in, whatever. I don't know how hard that is for them.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we, we have one locate, I mean, and I don't know of a second, but we only have one location in town that I know of where this is a regular thing. So I think in that scenario, you kind of bring them in for, you know, chat with Zach and just say, okay, what, how's it work for you? And those traditionally initially go, well, we don't want any regulation, right? We just want to do, like, we, we do it right. So we don't need a regulation, but that's not possible, right? So for every place that does it right, there's another place that pulls up a trailer, not even a food truck, drops it off and tries to sell tacos out of it to get around our, our regulations. So you do, you do need some type of uniform application, however we do it. So So there's going to have to be, you know, a window that that we take an opportunity, advantage of that opportunity. It might be some give or take on those.
So in the same helmet, there's a gentleman that has a hot dog cart that sits on a bird. Is is that considered food truck or is it a food trailer? How does that, is there?
Yeah, that gets back, that gets back to the definition. The 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 general term in Kannapolis is mobile food vendor. So, you know, the 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 key is that you need to be able to move that thing off at the end of the day. Doesn't even necessarily require that it be an integrated or an integral unit with, you know, a van that's attached, you know, typical food truck. It could be a trailer, but it's got to leave at the end of the night, you know? So it's conceivable that something like that would be allowable. I think the other thing is, you know, certainly health department regulations are important. And that's another way to verify that. We, you know, that goes without saying.
Yeah, I I certainly don't want it, them pulling up, and then we've seen this before at Stallings Park. It is dropping anchor without it being a part function, right? That they've already worked through parks correct, and they're there with our agreement as opposed to I'm just going to show up on a Saturday and drop anchor at Sims Park and sort out what kind of business I can get.
Yeah, I think when we craft these, the 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 total idea is you make it sufficiently restrictive, but understanding, you know, that you're not going to expect everybody to fill out a permit. You're really going after folks that are abusing system, right? Like, we're not pulling up and, you know, arresting Ian's kids for the lemonade stand. That's not, that's not, you know, technically, would they fall under a mobile? Probably, right? And if you're, you know, your food truck shows shows up at a at a restaurant or at a at a park or at something once, and they don't, they're not there again. You're not tracking them down to you, but if you have some, you know, repeat issue that's going on that you've been made aware of, or if something's there and you get a report, and they say, hey, this this truck's here, they shouldn't. You have some tool to go out and say, hey, no, you you don't have a permit, you don't have the right to be here now. Now you can get enforcement involved, but, you know, are we driving around with a food truck, you know, enforcement team looking at these now? We're we're gonna, we're going to react to these as we see them.
And the health department does the health piece, right? Cabarrus County Health Department.
Right.
The score, and they get a temporary as well, right?
They, yeah, I mean, they they have a, they get a essentially, you know, a license to dispense. And I I know that from past experience, when someone's on the street, our code enforcement officer says, let's see your for police and say, let's see your license. So it's, and and usually what we do is tell them to display not only your permit, your your license, obviously, your health department license, but also the permit that that you've got.
So I want us to see, us to get this right for Harrisburg. I don't care what the other towns do. I care about what Harrisburg does, and I want it to be right. I don't want to see on Main Street five vendor trucks. Right? So today, five vendor trucks could be there, right? And could be there indefinitely, could be there once every week. And and I was surprised in reading this ordinance that the landowner has to give permission, and they're the ones that are responsible for taking the trash, putting the the cans there. So i- is that happening? Is the, is the person that owns this property here in town center giving their permission for that vehicle to park there? And as I've heard from many days, prior to getting on council, and now it's all about tax dollars, it's about tax dollars, it's about tax dollars. Let's get tax dollars to Harrisburg. How much tax dollars does a vendor truck that parks here three days a week, one day every week here, how many tax dollars are they giving? If it's a fifty-dollar permit that we get one time? So I want us to look at that. Let's get it right for Harrisburg. Let's don't get it right because Kannapolis does it, because Mount Pleasant does it, because Charlotte does it. So I think you have a in-depth document that I will be looking at. And my question also would be, is if you deny the permit, does it go to the Board of Adjustment and they can have, they can override you?
It's an administrative decision, so I think probably would. So it's an administrative decision, administrative permit.
Now, I I'm just saying, right? So right now, I I think that we could have, and when you read those, it says, you, like, the vision and everything you said. You need to not block this side of angle, you need to not block this. But I think right now, I could see five trucks parked out here. I don't want to see five trucks. This is, I don't want it to be the town of mobile food vendors.
Five trucks and a festival.
No, a festival is different. A festival, I get a festival, that's different. I'm talking about
Daily.
Daily. I'm talking about you're taking the dollars away from this business, you're taking the dollars away from this business, when all I hear is, we need restaurants, we need restaurants. Well, why do you engage and why do you have to pay tax dollars to Harrisburg if I can just do a mobile truck and
Right.
pull up every week?
Which is why some communities limit the location. For example, downtown Kannapolis, there's a location where you have to go. And also, whatever's in the right of way, you talk about owner's permission. Who owns the right of way? The town of Harrisburg. So town of Harrisburg ultimately has to give that permission. And that's a whole other discussion we haven't had, in terms of right of way and encroachment, and that's not something we're doing now.
And it talked about parking spaces. It said you had only had to have one parking space for that truck for somebody can pull up on. So is town center bills out? Yes, I think these are, these are questions, please.
Location, yeah, and and accommodating.
So if I understand the process now, you guys are going to kind of take this back really put a fine-tooth comb on it, and then it goes to planning board first. So are you, are y'all comfortable looking at that after a planning board has revisited and then?
Sure, I just
I I'd like this.
A little sooner?
Yeah.
Oh, you'd like to have it sooner before?
Yeah.
We can do it concurrently.
I don't want it to go to planning board and then come to us, we tear it apart or, right? We're having to do a lot of
Or something will work out fine. We'll bring it to you on September eleventh, right? We could bring it as an agenda item on the eleventh, rough form.
Is that a reasonable?
When's the next planning?
September nineteenth.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think September eleventh is is reasonable to have you guys something, but honestly, I mean, I think we can we can do both. We can do this path concurrently so that you're not getting surprised by something that i- is on planning board. But also, you know, we have so many of these, you know, code items that we need to drill down on this, that we're going to be working on all of them concurrently and kind of bring packages in through. So I I guess you guys should just prepare to kind of be reviewing these from now through December as we bring text amendments and policy changes and deep dives on the things that have been brought before us already. Some of the stuff we're still waiting on. Some of these things that come up just impromptu, as well as the stuff our staff is identifying internally.
I am, I'm just wondering, what's the urgency right now? Because I know if you're saying we want to get it right, but then there's also a lot of people that do like to have food trucks and like to have these options. Like, why do we need to rush this?
Yeah, I think the speed is is too full. One, I think we just have a speed mandate on U D O updates in general, because, you know, the longer they sit out here, the longer they kind of become ingrained or expected as part of, well, we've always done it that way, you know? Why are you changing it now? I've I've accustomed my business to this, so we don't like to let them, you know, sit out there, you know, forever by themselves. The second for this one in particular is that it, it's so vague that I don't know if somebody challenged us that they couldn't set up a food trailer on a vacant lot for three hundred sixty-five days if they wanted to. And I think, I think we all agree that we didn't want that, right? So no one's ever, I don't think we contemplated that way, and it's, you could see whenever we adopted the U D O to now, it's not been a problem. But now we've seen it happen once, and I think we're nervous that, okay, what, is this the new norm? Are we going to have, you know, pop-up food trailers pretty much everywhere that we're trying to chase off and then have to have Rich kind of get involved with that? So I I think, I think if it's low-hanging fruit, we can get it done, but also I don't, you know, you don't want to rush it through, but I I would not delay a good upgrade for a perfect upgrade either. I I think you, we can, we can upgrade this as many times as we want. We can refine our U D O as many times as we want. If we know there are holes in it, let's patch the holes and, you know, plug all the big holes as we go along and then circle back around and and get more and more refined as we go. That that's kind of our process. But we're certainly open to suggestion on that.
And this won't require a public hearing, right?
This will.
Yeah. Yeah. It'd be, you you have public hearing, you can adopt at the same meeting. I mean, there's no, you know, it's a, there's no requirement. It used to be where you had to have a reading and then another reading. We don't need to have two readings, but you can adopt it at any point.
Which I think is all the more reason to have it concurrently, so we potentially do that at that October meeting. Is it September we have to do that? No, October.
October.
Is there anything grandfathered in right now that whatever change we make, it'll be grandfathered in?
No, because it's a temporary condition, so.
Okay.
Yeah. They expire.
There's no squatter's rights for either being in the public right of way or on somebody's property without
Thinking about setting something up?
No.
Wants to get his truck in.
And what is our fee right now for a vendor truck?
Shall we do it now?
Yeah.
It it, I don't think it's more than probably fifty bucks.
That's what, right?
I I believe it's a hundred.
Okay.
Oh, I hate to correct you.
It's certainly not more than that. It's a hundred, hundred, you know, fifty dollars. We're not making a lot on it. So i- if, again, there's anything specific that you really want to, you know, us to fold into the framework, then let us know or let Rob know, and and we'll roll it in.
Let me ask Rich then, can there be, what type of tax can be, if it's going to be a weekly truck that's set out there, or it's going to be out there three days a week, and it's not a special event? It's a weekly, it's an ongoing thing. Is the law prohibit us placing the Harrisburg tax on that?
What you, you
Yes. Sales tax, fee, whatever. Right, but I'm talking about this.
If you're talking about fee, your fees have to be reasonable compared with what it costs. And sometimes that's a little bit difficult to figure out, but that, you can't just charge these orders. That's that's kind of the general outlook, but there's not a statute or a amount of dollars. To answer your question more specifically, if you're talking about someone coming around every week, you know, I mean, you could, you could piece of, that you try to capture that. You're ha- you're having to I mean, you could issue a permit for a period of time, you know, maybe one day, maybe a week, maybe a month. Or you could do it, you know, if it's a different situation where it's a weekly thing. Then you would, you maybe have to have it get a new permit each time that they come in. There still has to be time in some general way with with how much it costs you to administer that.
Well, and here again in the budget, like, I I've encouraged us, I think last year, to say, look at this coming year where we can capture additional sales dollars that we don't charge the residents those sales dollars. So can you have a city, town of Harrisburg, sales tax that you collect only on vendor?
I don't think you can do that without state legislature.
Your sales tax is instead of the state level. Then you could get a local option for different things. But it has to be approved at the latest.
Okay.
Are there any more questions for Zach? Otherwise, we will plan to see this drafted up prior to our September eleventh meeting.
We will put it in gear.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Appreciate that. Next up, we have consideration of approval of the contract with Thomas Miller and Associates to prepare a strategic economic development plan for the town related to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
So I'm very excited. I'm going to get excited now, because we have been working on this project for a little while. And we have gone through the consultant selection process for the Strategic Economic Development Plan. We interviewed three consultants, Greenfield slash Retail Strategies, Rose Associates and Thomas P. Miller and Associates, and based on our interviews, which were myself, Lee and Rob, the recommendation is to award the contract to T P M to prepare the plan. They have a a very good track record communities throughout the U S and some frankly, very close in demographic to us. Lee Summit is a good comparable, and we feel that they're going to really be going to do a good job. The purpose of this plan is really simple. It's to get a game plan to catalyze non-residential growth in the town of Harrisburg. Talk about sales tax, property value, et cetera. It's to bring value to the community. The plan is going to be action-oriented. This is not going to be a sleeping document. In other words, it's not for you to start reading and fall asleep. It will be directive. It will be action-oriented. We'll answer three questions. Who are we, which is the assessment phase? What's our base? What's our condition? Where do we sit in the region? Number two, where do we want to go, which is the strategy for economic development for the town of Harrisburg? Number three is how do we get there? Implementation plan with action steps. So beginning with the end in mind is a good way to approach plans. There will be public engagement with this this process, input from stakeholders. We're going to bring a broad group in, obviously, business owners, CEOs, community leaders, foundations, Cabarrus Economic Development, anybody and everybody that we can bring in. And again, T P M has got experience with this, so they're going to convene stakeholder groups. They'll hold one-on-one interviews, and they're going to very quickly get a snapshot of where, what we are and and where we can go. Town council engagement will be initially through kickoff meeting and presentation. Excuse me. And so once the, once T P M gets going, they're going to do some analysis, they're going to do some assessment, and then they're going to come here and do a presentation to you all. They say, this is the Polaroid of Harrisburg. This is what we're looking at. And then give you some, get some feedback from you, and then really bear down on focus groups. Obviously, we're going to be updated regularly, staff will be, and then ultimately a final presentation of the plan to council. So in terms of timeline, the launch would be August, analysis would take place over September to November. Stakeholder engagement really would be ongoing, but we'll be focusing in more once we have the the base data and then the economic development plan completion in in January. We're hopeful that we'll get done as soon as in January. And again, this is an action-oriented document. I was talking to someone the other day, and I'm looking at it to focus on three I's. The first is incubators, the second is inventory, and the third is infrastructure. So those are some things. We're going to be looking for hard recommendations, what we should be targeting. And I want day one recommendations, what do we do, day one? And that includes, maybe it is an incubator, maybe it is a business center, whatever it might be, we want to move ahead as quickly as possible. Target industries, they're going to have at least five. Infrastructure investment, this is something that we hear a lot of companies, if you want to attract, you need to have some facility. You need to have buildings, do you have the capacity, do you have the infrastructure? You need to have buildings. Do you have the, uh, capacity? Do you have the infrastructure, economic incentives? Attraction strategy, all of those things that, uh, you need to attract, um, the business to your community. Organizational changes. Do we need to make some changes internally? Uh, or how we manage the, uh, economic development process for. The, uh, the town. So, um, the request before you, uh, is to, uh, take two steps. One of which is to approve contract, uh, with Thomas P. Miller and Associates for preparation. Of a strategic economic development plan for the town of Harrisburg in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And authorize the town manager to sign the contract and then also to approve a budget amendment for a hundred thousand dollars to fund. The, uh, contract or the plan, uh, with T P M, um, as a second, uh, companion motion. Any questions? Glad to, um, and then here's a answer.
So I saw the cost for Rose in there at forty thousand. What was the cost of green?
So. We did not get to the point with either Rose or Green. Where we were going to drill down. Uh, we got there with, um, again, this was a request for qualifications. It was not a R F P or a request for proposal or price proposal. And so we were looking for who was qualified, uh, to do the job. Uh, we did get some numbers, uh, associated with that, but ultimately, um, the decision was to go with T P M. And so we drilled down with them. I could tell you that either the other ones would have been, um, a whole lot closer to this price than. Than the initial numbers that they, uh, gave us.
Cause I, I was wondering why you chose them because in reading the document, I, I read what you put out on the R F P. And they verbatim shot it back to you in the document.
Right.
I'm trying to figure what they're going to offer and here's the one thing, and like, I know this is economic guys. I know it's all about business, but what I really, what struck me right off the bat was when you were getting your stakeholders. You left out one very important person. Segment of people in this.
Public.
Yes.
Yeah, well.
Residents.
That, that was not intentional.
It said public leaders. It said, to me, it was people that all were going to benefit this way. So I, I was kind of put aside that it didn't talk about getting input from our residents. Into is what they want in economic development.
It will, it will. I mean, that, that's fine tuning of the public outreach, but no, that, that, not to meant to be in a mission. We, we definitely want the public, uh, input, um, because obviously, uh, there's a character. You all adopted a new vision statement and it's got to sync with that and the people who live here are ultimately the ones that. Uh, are going to be in the community where this development takes place, so.
And let me try to clarify price point, um, on it again, um, did Zach adequately answer that? Cause I don't want to talk over him too much, but, um, so the, the, the first price, you know, you see some, some price in there from Rose and. And others was their scope of service to us. And after we selected the most qualified, then we developed a scope of service with that company. So in order to get an apples to apples price comparison, um, you would have to go back to, to those folks and give them the new scope. So I think if you see, um, at least the one you mentioned there is very narrow scope. And this isn't that narrow of a scope and, you know, I think that's important and significant for a couple of reasons with, with T P M. One, uh, we don't want a, uh, economic development plan, um, that's just fluff. We, we, we don't want to have something that's sitting on a shelf that tells us a lot of stuff we already knew and is not actionable. So in order to have a robust, um, public, um, stakeholder plan, that, that's where you see the, the price increase. T P M and everybody involved didn't have a lot of, uh, stakeholder involvement, public outreach, uh, you know. Putting that document together and, and giving us feedback on that. That stuff we added after the fact to say, no, this is the level. Of public outreach that we think we're going to have to have specific to Harrisburg and that's where you see that, that, you know, price fluctuation. Also, you know, I want to point out that, that quality-based selection, um, in every state is important for a reason. You get what you pay for. And if you look at, um. Professionals in their field and, and you start comparing prices as if it's a construction project. It's one, it's prohibited by law, um, but for good reason, because you tend to get very bad products. If you just start with price point. So, um, the law is you select who's most qualified to do the job and then negotiate the price down. To something that's agreeable. So that, you know, we, we feel like this price is extremely fair for what we're doing and that T P M is a. High-quality national expert in this field and I don't think that's, uh, a bad thing to have in this regard.
Which I wanted to ask Councilman Patrick, have you ever worked with this firm before?
Any other questions for Zach? With that, is there a motion on the floor to approve the contract with Thomas Miller and Associates as presented this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Ian. Is there a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Our last item underneath business is the.
Do we need to do the budget amendment as a separate vote?
I think it was all in one motion.
Are you sure? I see him saying yes and two separate.
Might as well do it because we won't have a second, uh, crack at it, so.
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Moving at rapid speed. Last item under, um, the business is the consideration and appointments to the Harrisburg Arts Cultural and Heritage Committee. And with us, we have Jim Stino.
First presentation and last one. That's great. I'm here, uh, assuming, good evening again, uh, mayor and council. I'm here this evening to talk about, uh, appointments to our Harrisburg Arts Culture and Heritage Committee, also known as HATCH. A little history about the, uh, HATCH committee. It's a subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It was initially formed as a five-member committee. It was increased to seven members this past spring when the town's advisory boards were reorganized. And the plan is to fill the two openings now, giving them a full seven-member committee. The current terms of the committee, three members were reappointed in January of this year. Micah Cash, who you met earlier this evening, G. Hyerman and Tony Jansky. And their terms will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Two terms are expiring, uh, next June, and that are, uh, those are Karen Andrade, who you also met this evening, and Kimmy Roberts. With the addition of two new committee members, those appointed will take their seats now and serve until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. At which time they can seek reappointment to a new two-year term. This would sync with the two other expiring terms, giving the committee a four-member, three-member rotation, rotation of yearly appointments. And this also immediately gives the committee a full complement of members at a time when volunteer help is greatly needed. Advertising the vacancies. The vacancies were advertised, uh, this past, uh, June, uh. June and July, I believe, um, actually, May and June, uh, in the town's social media and website. Two applications were received for the two positions. The applications were reviewed by myself and council member Cotel. Last month. The applicants. Larissa Mervin, Larissa resides on Kensington, Kensington Forest Drive and is employed as a managing attorney for Legal Aid of North Carolina. She is passionate about the arts, would like to apply her skillset to serve the needs of the Harrisburg community. The second applicant is Dwayne Lott. Dwayne resides on Grace Church Street and is employed as a bank examiner for the Office of the Controller of the Currency. He desires to provide assistance and ideas to build a distinct art and culture scene in Harrisburg. That enhances the quality of life for residents and helps attract and retain local business. Like to, uh, make a special note that both Ms. Mervin and Mr. Lott interviewed for the open hatch positions in January of this past year, of this year. But we're not successful in attaining an appointment due to the current members seeking reappointment to nu- to new terms. Both greatly impressed the HATCH committee at that time and the committee did come to me, uh, HATCH committee and asked if, uh, two things. First, could we add it them now to get to seven, which we could not do according to bylaws? But that, if that's the case, they would hope that in the future we could consider going to seven. This was long before council had decided to open it back up and get to seven. So they were very impressed with the, the two, uh, applicants and hope they could be added. So the recommendation is staff and, and, uh, staff being myself and council member, uh, Cotel. Is that council appoint Larissa Mervin and Dwayne Lott to each serve a term on the town's HATCH committee from August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. To June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And the motion, uh, if you so, uh, choose. Would be to approve the appointment of Dwayne Lott and Larissa Mervin to the Harrisburg Arts Culture and Heritage Committee effective August fifteenth to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And with that, I'll take some questions.
Are there any questions for Jim?
Motion to approve, mayor.
Some motion to approve on the floor. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried and welcome Larissa and Dwayne to the committee.
Thank you all.
Action items. I have. Two items, just kind of a monitoring of the Harrisburg Elementary School roundabout during peak times, but that might be given a week or two. And see what that looks like. And the second was the no overnight parking in town center. Did you have anything else?
And Councilman Smith about the walkway they were putting up.
Oh, in the walkway.
Oh, yeah.
Camilla Garden.
Yeah.
That is all I have.
And that's all we have this evening. Um, we do have a need for closed session this evening to discuss a personnel matter. So those in the audience, um, we will need a motion to move into closed session and you will have to leave council chambers. Just so you know, there is no further business on the agenda after that closed session. We'll just have to come back in and close that. So is there a motion to move into closed session? So second, yeah, Janet says. Ron.
Second.
Thank you. We will move into closed session. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. We are back in open session. We have no further business this evening. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. Good evening, everyone.